Okay.
The approval of the agenda, I do not believe that there is anything that we are changing for tonight. The approval minutes, I noticed that we don't have any minutes coming up. Are those just, just not ready? Or?
Um, no, they were not. They were not.
Okay. So then we bounce down to the public participation. We will have the public participation where Tony will give you the two minutes and he will give you a 30 second reminder. He will queue in verbally and wave a little hand just to let you know when appropriate to do so. The board members can say anything that they would like to in, in terms of any questions or anything that comes up in the points of information. And when you speak, if you could, please put your name and your address so that we have it for Lisa. And so then we are ready at this point. So if you have anything that you would like to say from the public participation, if you could raise your blue hand and I will call on you from there. Okay, I'm going once. Going twice. Okay, let's move forward to the correspondence and that will be to Tony.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and welcome back.
Good to be back.
An email from the state representative with information on ESSR two funding. Email requesting a February Zoom meeting to discuss racism and the experiences of our citizens. Email articulating concern over the proposed school schedule. Email with observations on the last meeting. An email, thank you, the board for steps to address mask wearing. The writer also supports the proposed budget. Email with a video as a reminder of the big picture. An email urging the vaccinations of our local educators. And an email asking about the minutes from recent meetings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Tony. At this point, I will open it up to board members for points of information. If you would like to say anything at this point, please raise your little blue hand and we will go through that. Madhu?
Uh, you know what? I'm sorry. That was from earlier.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry.
This time would like to say anything, please raise your blue hand. And if not, we will continue on. Everyone looks ready to go. Okay. Let's go ahead and go to the student representative report. If we could have Simmer and Alexandra.
Hi, so we don't have that much, but um seniors will be wearing their special senior shirts the first Friday of every month. And Mr. Poland is having meetings with seniors to talk about safe ways to have end of year activities. And possibly there, I'm not 100% sure, but there might be a meeting on February 25th to talk specifically with parents about what they think would be safe for end of year activities such as prom.
And Alexandra? Um, so NHS is working on a project where we're raising money at the high school through Valentine's Day activities that are like we're working COVID safe ones. And then the money is gonna, we're gonna donate supplies to local hospitals. And then student council is continuing with our decorating of the school to hopefully keep spirits up. So we just switched the decorations over to Valen, to our Valentine's Day theme. I think that's it.
Thank you, guys. I know you're into the second half already. Even in my time, Hoppa came up with my little daughter with 100 days, whereas you know, the 100 days of school and kindergarten, you make the shirts and everything. So I know that you guys must be excited that you're halfway through. Perfect. Thank you guys so much. Okay, let's go to, oh, that already brings us up to the superintendent's report. So Dr. Willett, if you would like to take us off on the monthly financial report.
All right, off we go. This is, as you know, monthly provide the first meeting of each month, the monthly financial report. This letter accompanies it. It is in the, in the packet. And you know, I won't read the letter verbatim, but instead we'll go over the monthly financial numbers here is in some areas just to highlight. I'll blow it up as big as I can on the screen so you can see it.
I will say that when I'm watching on TV, it's very difficult to see any of this.
Yeah, it's, it's in the board packet too. But, but yes, I know, I'm sure, I'm sure it is. So I blew it up to the greatest extent that I can at the moment, but a couple of areas to highlight here. And some of these things are not that different from the previous months. Some are just edging a little bit in a different direction. Salaries are under budget again. You know, we the current available balance is about 382,000. It's fluctuated a bit. The pandemic has resulted in a situation where you know, we were not able to fill all the staff positions the entire span of the year at this point. And some people had, you know, had resigned, some people left and some people came back. As you know, we've had some fluctuation there in Paris. So you know, there, there, there is going to be, there's going to be on that item throughout this year, probably a little bit more of an available balance than we typically would have. And the substitute balance is also under budget. Once again, as I've talked about before, not as many people are interested in subbing, but those things do and will probably get absorbed by other things as we go along. We may have to do certain contracted services between now and the end of the year. And we do have some contracted services, for instance, right now for SLPs. So these are people that, you know, we needed to bring on as other people left. And so you may not see certain impacts here in the salaries line, but we may end up seeing it on a contracted services line later. Because we can't go without an SLP, for instance, or speech language pathologist. So we can't find one staff wise, we would have to contract out for one. And that's sometimes what's happening. Overtime expenses can't be encumbered. They're currently under budget by 79,000. It's down by about 12,000 from last month, so we are incurring them and we can expect to do that. Especially if we do have plans to move more aggressively in a different direction in terms of our, you know, our pandemic status. That's going to mean that we need to do additional overtime cleaning and other things to make up for certain balances. Like, for instance, if we have, you know, we don't have a Wednesday, we're going to have to up the, the number of hours perhaps for overtime and maybe the number of people cleaning so we can cover the same amount of space. Stipends are currently over budget. We've talked about this before. Pay to play has been reduced from 200 to $100 per person. So that's going to impact this. And also those, that line usually does not come into closer balance until those dollars are collected. Not all of them have been collected. Health insurance, employee benefits, all of that are about under budget. We do have some, you know, people and various things that have occurred that would put that, you know, make that a reality for us. Newly hired employees and retired employees, the FICA, the Medicaid, the social security newly and hired employees are those that we brought on as the year progressed. So that, that number is going to have an available balance of about 127,000 under. And it'll remain under probably until the hiring process is completed. And even then, we will not have hired everybody. You know, the day after people resign. So there should, there, there will be some money in there under budget probably as we go through the year. Retirement, course reimbursement, unemployment expensive expenses are currently under budget. But we have to review that again. There's an increase in unemployment expenses, as you might imagine, due to the coronavirus. And we talked about that a little bit last month. That really hasn't changed that much. And we do have people looking to take some degree work because they're home now in the pandemic. And we should see that line impacted as we go along and that degree work is completed. Let's see, legal audit and tax services are under by 76 at this point in January. The number's down from last month, about 72,000. The district is negotiating this year, as you know, and the secretary of union negotiations will start very shortly. So we can expect that line to continue to incur as we go through the year. And we continue through negotiations and other aspects of, you know, of our operations that would take from that line. All repairs, maintenance, custodial, cleaning, equipment expenses, technical expenses continue to, you know, be drawn upon as the year progresses. Many of the maintenance and custodial expenses are cyclical. They're not all incurred until we get to the end of the year. There has been an increase resulting from some supply costs and material costs. Some things are more expensive than they have been in the past, all related generally to the pandemic. Excuse me for a minute, I just have to keep me, get that waiting room. Okay, I think we're good. Okay, so student transportation is over by about 53. This is mostly due to, to out of district student transportation. Special services, special education tuitions also took an impact of about 100 as we reached the halfway point in the year. That's going to continue to have an impact this year. Energy expenses were transferred to the town, as you know, and are part of the UISF agreement. Textbooks, we do have the, we have some people who had taken leave or are back and we're going to continue purchasing in textbooks. They're under by about 23, but I do expect that to be incurred fairly shortly in the next few months. Instructional supplies, miscellaneous supplies, general supplies are collectively under budget and spending will continue, as you know, through the remainder of this year. You know, we do expect that, that, that supply budget to run one run through the entire year here and be depleted. New instructional equipment is still, I think it's still right now over until we get the ERF funds to backfill. You expect that at this point because those expenditures were made immediately. And we have to get the, the money from ERF to town and town to, to our own budget to balance that out. So at this point, that's, that's basically the, the general overview of this. And I know FFC is going to follow up, you know, as they usually do in the next FFC meeting as well.
Okay, at this time, I would like to open it up to board members to have any questions for the monthly report. You could just raise your blue hand. Let's go to Rini.
Um, yeah, I just had a quick question and we may have covered this before and I'm not able to remember. On the stipends, you said the contribution was lower to 100. Haven't, have some of the things that stipends would have been paid for, weren't they suspended? So would you be paying out the stipend? So maybe I don't understand how that works.
Yeah, most of the things we would pay people to do are still in effect this year. Maybe last year, March, that wasn't the case, but we still have, for instance, CIAC still ran sports. Okay, so we're still going to have stipends for the, the coaches.
So there was nothing canceled or anything like that?
Well, to the point you're making, middle school sports aren't running, but they never really absorbed too much. The high school sports are the major, the major impactors on stipends for the play, pay to play. So there may be some recovered in middle school, for instance, where we're not paying out some stipends, but but we are for, for high school and we've lowered what we collect. So we will probably be over budget in that area.
Okay, thank you. At this time, any other members? If not, we will jump into the main budget.
Okay, so moving into the fiscal year 2022 Board of Ed budget. So you have your Board of Ed budget documents. They are all, this Board of Ed budget will also be, once the board has reviewed it, shared with the town tomorrow, provided the Board of Ed adopts it. And this will also be posted to the website as soon as the Board of Education has completed its review. The Board of Ed, the Board of Ed budget proposed to the Board of Ed right now for potential adoption has a few modifications from the special, from the superintendent's proposed budget. The format is roughly the same and these are linked so people can jump to different sections once it is posted. It basically has a reduction from the 359% down to a 3.19%. So between the superintendent's proposed to the Board of Ed, the percentage is less and there are a couple of modifications. The percentage is lowered basically because of reduction in line 730 of about 55,000. So let me get, I'm just going to scroll down really quickly to the narrative. A lot of this content is similar, but in the introduction, it gives you, you know, the basic numbers here and the 3.19 and what it's comprised of. The section is a little bit longer in that it does give some, some more evidence of some of the impacts of the pandemic. So for instance, it talks about, you know, what the mental health impacts are, some research from the National Alliance on Mental Illness. There are still articles posted here with respect to some of the mental health needs. And there are some data now posted with respect to some of the impacts that we can expect from a, you know, from a learning standpoint. Some of the, you know, summer slide is exacerbated. And so these, these are shared as part of the Board of Ed budget to provide some additional background into some of the reasoning why we would need to have some of these resources. So those are additions to the introduction section. But on top of those additions, as was discussed as part of the budget process and in the meetings, a chief, now the, the title for it at this point is Chief Personnel Officer would be added to the budget. And this Chief Personnel Officer is described in this paragraph and the following paragraphs. And as far as funding is concerned, a breakdown of how that Chief Personnel Officer has been added to the budget is articulated in the introduction. So for instance, the Chief Personnel Officer will mean an, will mean an expenditure of about 40,011. That's in addition, but the reductions to the budget from the superintendent's proposed budget to the Board of Ed budget that you're looking at tonight include the counseling position and the social worker. These two jobs, these two positions were transferred over to the S or two funds. So S or two came out between the superintendent's proposed budget and tonight. So we were able to, after a few meetings and checking with various authorities at the state, we were able to offset our budget for, for the Board of Ed budget request by these two positions and fund them with, with S or as they are COVID related. So it highlights the reduction from the budget superintendent's proposed to Board of Ed. Of those two positions, the amount of money that those two positions were, the, the Medicare that was related, the line 730 reductions and a total reduction of 199201 with an addition of 40 is a difference of 159190, which is what takes the Board of Ed budget from the 1.4 million requests to a 1.2 million requests. Just some rough numbers. And that's what brings it down to the 3.19. It also has a position transition, position that was financial assistant becomes the 1.0 human resource generalist. So instead of calling that an assistant or support or secretary, this is called a generalist. And these are the changes that make that position possible and viable for us. So the conversation we were having about a chief officer in the central office, now this is the articulation of that position in the Board of Ed budget. And it's how it's going to be funded. And it's, you know, overall, in terms of the numbers, how the budget was brought down from a 359 to a 319. So essentially that's it. It also describes the change to the FTEs. The, the net add is the 35 and where the major changes is in the grants rather than losing two, it balances out with those two going to the grant side. So it's actually going to, on the FTE page, look like a zero. And that's just though because of the way it fell and how the grants moved around a bit. So that's, that's essentially the, it in a nutshell, these positions coming out of the operating budget going into grants. The rest of it goes into the general narrative of the community that, that you're used to seeing and you saw on the superintendent's proposed budget. And then ultimately the summary. So essentially the main difference between the superintendent's proposed budget and the Board of Ed budget that is in front of you tonight, based on the conversations that we had in the, in the budget meetings and, and from last Wednesday, are the changes that you see in front of you here on the screen as articulated on page, just your page, page 11 of 44. For those who want to look at it once this is posted. So that's really the main difference between the superintendent's proposed and, and the Board of Ed. And it fulfills what we had discussed in those meetings.
Thank you very much for that, Dr. Willett. I see that Madhu has his hand up, so let's.
Um, I did have one question. I think someone might have brought this up last meeting. I think it might have been Jacob. The two positions that we end up, that we ended up funding with the S or funds, um, does that just basically mean next year is we're, we're going to have to include these positions in our budget?
Yes, um, yes. And he, yes, that's right. And Mr. Murray had asked that, Mary had asked that in the last meeting, I think on Wednesday. And the way I'd answered it then, which is the same as it would be now, is that, you know, as we get to the end of the year, we will look at retirements and have resignations. And the hope is that we would be able to, you know, use retirements and resignations to segue those positions into a regular part of the budget. What it does do for next year is the ESSR funds, they can be used on those funds because the, one of those two positions is one that is COVID related and added. And the other position is, was already funded by a grant that, that we got for the last two years. So it's not actually, it's just, you know, it's continuing to fund that position with a grant, with grant funds. And the other one is an addition that is a COVID related addition. So it is covered under S or two grant funds. So that's why we can continue to fund these under S or two grant funds. Or, you know, make them continue with those funds. But we would be looking to in the next fiscal year, you know, add those positions and balance them with other positions that may be retiring or resigning as we get to the end of that, that fiscal year.
Okay, thanks. I just want to make sure my, my memory served correctly.
Yeah. At this time, would any other members have any other questions? Want to raise your little blue hand? Jacob?
First, welcome back, Ashley. I don't know if I said that already. Good to see you back. No really question. I'll just give a comment because we're reaching the end of this process. I just want to give a big thank you to Dr. Willett and all the staff. I'm sure that have helped us put together this document. I think we've been able to really work together, the board and our staff to craft a document that really kind of meets our goals. I think that this budget is a good document that is going to help our schools rebuild after a year of craziness. And I think that the way that we're doing this with prudent use of the S or fund and perhaps the ERF down the road is a smart move. And I look forward to presenting this to the town council.
Thank you, Jacob. Is there anyone else at this time? Okay, um, we do have to vote on this. Do we move it to board action or can we just vote for it here?
Thank you. You probably have to vote. I'm sorry, move it to board action.
That's what I. Christina Plord, I'd like to make a motion to move the superintendent's H2 fiscal year 2022 Board of Ed budget down to K2.
Madhu, Rendu Jantala, second.
Any discussion on that? If you want to raise your hand. Okay, if not, we will vote. Jacob?
I.
Plord?
I.
Tony?
I.
Griffin?
I.
Sophia?
I.
Rini?
I.
Madhu?
I.
Dana? You're saying I, but we don't hear.
She mouthed I.
Thumbs up too. Okay, perfect. I as well. Therefore, we will move the the fiscal year 2022 Board of Ed budget to K2. So let's move down to the committee and liaison reports. Um, I believe the curriculum committee met. So if Madhu or Jacob have.
Yeah, I got something for you. So I think our meeting we had last week went really well. We discussed the differences between curriculum director and assistant superintendent and chief operating officer, I guess now the Chief Personnel Officer. We also had just a really wide ranging conversation about gaps in our current curriculum and kind of post pandemic goals that we want to work on. And I think this is going to be where we laid a lot of great groundwork for meetings going forward and for our district going forward. Oh, and we also did mention a bit about reporting some aggregated academic performance data. Eventually, once COVID starts to subside and having that information available in the curriculum committee meetings or to the boards that we have a better idea of how our students are performing. It's similar to what Dr. Willett had done in the past with his superintendent's report. And I think the committee agreed that that might be helpful going forward. And one last thing, we did also talk about having a full board presentation about the Lighthouse project sometime after budget season is done.
Okay.
Do you have anything to add to that? I'm good.
Nope, you, you pretty much nailed it.
Okay. Um, let's see, anyone else? I know, Rini, you can't talk about really where you're at with negotiations. So it's kind of so silly to ask.
For the next round. So that's, there's not much anyway.
Perfect. Um, let's see, I know, Tony, did you have any policies?
Yeah, Policy Committee met. I'm gonna get my days mixed up. The third.
Well, welcome back to you as well. Welcome back to the mainland.
Thank you. I'm still trying to get my what day is what oriented to the United States, but I'll get there. But we, we talked about one, a face covering slash mask policy, you know, as, as requested by the main board that we take a look at. Came up, general guidelines and then asked Dr. Willett to kind of craft, take those guidelines and craft them into something that we will then review and discuss at the next meeting. We then went on and completed our discussion of the, the 4120, which is the notice regarding electronic monitoring. And approved, at least from the committee perspective, the minor to that committee. And it will be in the queue, waiting for first read whenever it reaches the agenda.
Perfect. Okay, thank you so much, Tony. Let's see, the communications committee, you guys have.
So we didn't need, unfortunately, it's been, it's been hard getting all three of us together. So the policy was tabled for when all three of us could be there, especially Tony, since we know how he loves policy. More importantly, I think I went to the town council meeting last night and they voted on the Honeywell settlement and have directed the town to go ahead with that. And so that was really what pertained to us. And just a quick question for Walt, there's nothing else we need to do on our side right now, correct?
No, we, we, their lawyer, the board lawyer and their lawyer had been communicating on that. So last night was the, was the final word on that. You know, I'll make sure with our lawyer that there isn't any TRI, but, but they haven't reached out to me and we didn't get a chance to connect today. So probably tomorrow we'll connect.
Perfect. And that's all I had. Thanks, Ash. Thanks, Dr. Willett.
Perfect. Dana, I know that you're gonna have a Birch Grove, but I don't know if you would like to wait for the technology approval portion?
Um, yeah, we do have that on our agenda, the tech package tonight. I just wanted to make sure everybody has signed up for their Birch Grove primary walkthrough that we had to reschedule. Um, I believe that was sent out. So it should be on that list. I want to say there's, there's multiple. So if you haven't signed up, please get that information back. Um, we did go through a whole bunch of change orders. The patio, the partition, the, the curriculum desk for the librarian, seam change and all that kind of fun stuff. But the big one is the tech package that we'll be visiting later on this season.
Perfect. At this time, am I forgetting anyone? If you could just raise your hand because FFC will meet after, later this, this month. So anyone else that am I forgetting? I'm not. Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. Chairperson's report. Um, it's glad, I'm glad to be back. And thank you very much to all the board members for keeping me up to date as to what's going on and what's happening. And Dr. Willett and Jen, thank you very much for taking the time out and making sure that I was up to par with everything. So I just wanted to say thank you very much to everybody and especially the communities too, for the messages and texts I got for having little Claire around. So thank you guys very much. Let's go to the board action. So let's go to K1 for the Birch Grove Technology Approval.
So you're used to these now to some extent. And you'll notice that this is phase five. I'm not sure if Mr. Murray, yep, she is. Katie's always here. Thank you, Katie. So basically, this is similar to what you've seen before. The difference that I do want to point out, and then I'll hand the floor to Katie, is that instead of, instead of putting 1,000 documents into that one packet, these are linked so people can access them as a, as broken down disaggregated ones rather than one long 100 page kind of document. So just if you click on those links, as it's posted, it should bring you directly to those documents. So I'm just going to hand it off to Ms. Murray now to give you a further articulation.
Good evening.
I, this is very similar to what we talked about two weeks ago, I think, with the F F N E package, this is the technology portion of it. The specs were developed similar to furniture. The good news about this is when they finalized it, the pricing did come down a little bit. So we are much, much closer to the total line item on both furniture and technology now. I think we're under twenty thousand dollars over, which is a weird way to put it, sorry. But, so that's the good news. And as, as I mentioned in the last board meeting, once this gets approved by the Board of Ed, the architect takes this to the state, I think tomorrow or Friday, and the state reviews it with them pretty intensely. And once the state gives either feedback for changes or their approval, this package now goes, gets priced in two parts. Part of it gets priced off the state bid list. So those are items that have already been bid publicly. And anything that's not on the state bid list will be put out to bid by the town. Once those bids come back and we have a final pricing for the entire technology package, the building committee will make final decisions about purchasing based on the final pricing we get. Similar to furniture, this package has a very substantial portion of it is essential items, and these are things like computers for every classroom for the teachers, the appropriate technology in the media room, which is, you know, a bunch of computers there. This includes, it's a big technology packet, there's some servers and things like that involved. And there's also a small amount of what they call wishlist items. These are items that are very important and would make running the school better. It would impact the children and the staff in a positive way, but they are not what are considered the, the final required items. For technology, the majority of the wishlist items are charging carts, which I understand is, fits into the, the technology policies of the district. This would allow for some additional charging carts to charge technology pieces in special rooms, such as the art room, the science room, things like that. So there are a number of rooms that would like to have charging carts. All the classrooms will have them, and those are considered essential, but wishlist, we do have some smaller charging carts. We also have some hearing assistance technology items for the cafeteria, I believe, for the gymnasium cafeteria area. So this would assist any students, staff or community members who are attending an event who have a hearing disability, this would help them be able to hear things better. There are a number of these devices already included, but this is considered, again, a wish, quote unquote wishlist. And the final wishlist items on this package are weatherproofing for outdoor wireless access points so that the students and staff would have wireless access outside of the building.
Dana, would you like to add anything to this?
Um, no, Katie did it, thank you for coming on and popping on tonight, Katie, I know you're a plate school. But yeah, no, the team, the team that has been comprised to, to work on this, put together a fantastic package and has been really working closely with Dr. Willet and Mr. Saba and Mr. Swanson and the educators. So, you know, I think that they, they're looking at every fine detail. Some of the wishlist is some of the things I talked about, specifically like the charging carts. I was worried about the flexibility and diversity of the charging carts and those can be used for a multitude of different types of computers, laptops, iPads, those kind of things. They're portable as well, which, which makes it more accessible from room to room and different things like that. But I just wanted to thank Katie and the team for, you know, running such great meetings but in challenging each other on some of it. But J C J Damada and the whole team and that, that's working on this and Fong and her team have done a great job with this furniture and technology, so that's it. And I look forward to being with whoever my peers that I'm going to be with during the walkthrough. I think you guys are going to be absolutely blown away at what you're going to see. It's what this team has put together is phenomenal and I'm so excited for another student sometime.
Ben, I'm chair, if I might just add one more thing. I, I know that the board, similar to the building committee, has felt like things are coming very quickly. This, this package is one of the, this and furniture, one of the packages we actually had a nice lead time on. And also, this is the final phase packet for this building project. So we, we will not be coming back to the board to ask for your approval for any more construction plans. This is the last one. We still have some change orders and I'm sure some closeout items, but the project's running on time, on schedule. The schedule looks amazing and it's running on budget and they're doing a great job.
Perfect. Do any board members have any questions for either Dana or Katie? Nope, okay, well, Tony, Tony's got his hand up.
Yeah, sorry, just procedural question here. Are we looking to approve this tonight or is this just a first read and we're looking to approve it the next one?
No, I believe that.
There is action desired.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, second discussion. Yeah, there's always action.
That's what I wanted to clarify, so it's a second discussion vote, we're looking for that to happen tonight.
Yep.
Thank you.
And there's a mouthful of action, so whoever wants to like go with the, the whole motion.
I'll go ahead, this is Dana Fulvin, can you hear me?
Yep.
Proposed motion, motion to approve the final Birch Grove Primary School Phase Five Technology and Project manuals as prepared for bidding and dated January twenty nine, twenty one, including the professional cost estimate of six seventy four, eight forty nine, thirty three, which is within the forty six million total project costs for the State Office of School Construction Grants and Review Project Number one four two dash zero zero eight three N. This motion authorizes the Chair of the Board of Education and Superintendent of Schools to sign the state forms, S C G dash zero four two, and request a review of final plans.
Jacob Mari, second.
Any other further discussion? If not, we will do a roll call vote. All those in favor can say aye, any opposed can say nay, or you can abstain. Jacob?
Aye.
Griffin?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Plord?
Aye.
Madhu?
Aye.
Reenie?
Aye.
Sophia?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
I'm a I as well, therefore, our K one Birch Grove Technologies is approved as is. Okay, that brings us to the fiscal year twenty twenty two Board of Ed budget.
Jacob.
Go ahead.
Jacob Mari, I move to accept and approve the Board of Education budget as presented on the February tenth, twenty twenty one Board of Education meeting and authorize the superintendent to present it to the town manager as the Board of Education adopted budget for fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two.
Madhu, Randu Gentala, second.
Okay, at this time, any discussion? If not, we will have a roll call vote. So Jacob?
Aye.
Griffin?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Plord?
Aye.
Madhu?
Aye.
Reenie?
Aye.
Sophia?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Therefore, Dr. Willet, you can hand this off to town council. Let's go to public participation. Comments must be two items on this agenda and Tony will time you two minutes and give you the thirty second warning verbally and physically with his little hand waving it around. He's, he's looking to do that tonight. And if you could, please like list your name and your address. And we will start off with Karen.
Uh, yes, hi, Karen Moran, fifty Merlot Way. I just think the lighthouse concept should have been part of leading your conversations about the budget and not after the fact. I don't think it needed to be a big presentation, but as an overall vision for the district, it's important as especially part of strategic planning and budgeting toward progress and improvement. So I'll look forward to hearing about that, but I think it would have better served the board to hear it before your budget process. Second, I'd like to know how the board is going to support and advocate for this budget with the town council when the time comes for the joint meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Karen. At this time, is there any other public participants that would like two minutes? If you could raise your blue hand. Okay. We will go to points of information. Oh, Madhu, go ahead.
So just wanted to respond on to that. I think, you know, based on comments that the board has made, I think we're all pretty excited to defend this budget. I think we've all asked some questions that, you know, some good questions that we've gotten good feedback on. I think we all have a good understanding of what's being asked for, why we're asking for it. So I personally look forward to defending this budget and I think it's, I think it's a good document. That was it for me.
Thank you, Madhu, I agree too. Anyone else at this time? No blue hands tonight, here we go, Jacob.
Yeah, no, a second, everything Madhu said. And I'd also just like to add about the Lighthouse projects. It is something that I wish we could have discussed earlier. You know, we've had a very crazy year. Obviously, that kind of sidetracked us, but I'm really excited to begin this conversation. We've had some nice initial conversations up in curriculum committee and hopefully it's something that we can make some real progress in with this year.
Thank you, Jacob, let's go to Sophia.
I just want to say that I'm definitely excited to support and defend this budget. I think our constituents have reached out to the board countless times with regards to concerns with COVID and the ramifications it's had on the students in our district. And I think this budget addresses a lot of those concerns. So I see no reason why, hopefully the town council won't accept it and it just addresses what's happening right now with our district.
Thank you, anyone else? No, no blue hands, okay. Dr. Willet, do you want to touch base on any of the future items that we have since taken them off of the agenda?
Yeah. I, I guess I would say the, the review as we get in, later into the year, the superintendent monthly, monthly report adding some data points in there about performance and also thinking about maybe we can do a new instructional rounds as well as some of the culturally responsive ed and culture climate aspects that we had, you know, we had highlighted before. I think those will be maybe the big three, social emotional learning and that type of thing as well. As you're moving into the next few months and get closer to the adoption of this, this budget in May or hopefully passage of the budget and referendum. Between those two points, we can do some of those activities, I think.
Perfect. Okay, I don't believe there's any new business. Therefore, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Jacob Mari, I move that we adjourn the February tenth Regular Board of Education meeting at seven forty nine P M.
Christina Plord, second.
Okay, discussion, I don't believe anyone's going to have any discussions, so therefore we will go to the roll call vote. Jacob?
Aye.
Plord?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Sophia?
Aye.
Reenie?
Aye.
Madhu?
Aye.
Griffin?
Aye.
I'm a I as well, therefore our February tenth meeting will adjourn at seven fifty. Wow, welcome back to.